Today is Tuesday, March 15th, 2022. This is the Hanson Board of Selectmen's meeting. Please join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please join in, please join me for a moment of silence for Bill Seward, who has passed away recently. He was a veteran as well as a retired town employee up at the Indian Head School. Thank you. Mr. Weeks, do you mind reading this week's announcements?
Absolutely. Announcements. Reminder for the annual Boston Bruins for their 15th annual pajama drive to benefit DCF Wonder Fund in Cradles to Crayons. Bring a pair of pajamas to the Hanson Public Library from now through March 31st and support children in need across Massachusetts this winter. We are looking for citizens at large to become members of the newly revitalized Bylaw Review Committee. Volunteer applications may be found on the town website at www.hanson-ma.gov or by calling the selectman's office at 781-293-2131. Volunteers are also needed on the following committees: Bylaw Review Committee, Capital Improvement Committee, Conservation Commission, Cultural Council, Disabilities, Facebook Upkeep Committee, Highway Building Committee, Historical Commission, Memorial Day Patriotic Observance, Memorial Field Trustees, Nathaniel Thomas Mill Committee, Parks and Fields Committee, and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. We have upcoming meetings: Board of Selectmen, March 22nd, 2022, and Board of Selectmen, April 5th, 2022. That's it.
Great, thank you very much. So tonight we have a packed agenda. And just to help get people in and out, I know we have a presentation from our town planner, which is pretty exciting. But before that, I just kind of want to try to get people in and out as soon as I can. So is there anyone here tonight for town business to get appointed or anything else? Yes, sir?
I'm Edwin Hill to be appointed to the Conservation Board.
All right, great. Edward, do you mind just coming to the podium real quick? So Edward, why would you like to serve on the Conservation Commission?
I've always been interested in the environment and all the rest. And at my old house, I used to live a budding conservation land. It was a beautiful area and it was well-maintained in Marshfield. And after moving to Hanson eight years ago, I've been exploring a lot of the conservation land, but I didn't even really know what was out, what was out there. I just, I just want to do what's best, you know, for the town and the, you know, the environment in, in general.
Great. Any questions from the board?
Have you been to Burridge Pond?
Here, where?
Burridge Pond?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Then you get my vote.
Any other questions or comments from?
I just asked the same thing of everybody. Any conflicts or anything that we need to be aware of?
No, I mean, I worked for a financial service company and I had to go through, had to have them okay me. So I can't get any, you know, those restrictions they put on me, what I can't do as far as, you know, taking money and going to be all volunteer. There's a few different things, but that's, you know, I work in IT, so I'm not actually dealing with actual money. But if, if there is anything that comes up as, as, you know, any, any borrowing or anything to do with the town, I have to recuse myself, even though I would have no idea what you're talking about anyways.
Excellent. Nope, all right. With that being said, I'm looking for a motion to appoint Edwin Carter-Hill to the Conservation Commission.
So moved second.
Moved by Mr. Weeks, seconded by Ms. Kemet. All in favor? Four oh.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Is it okay if I stay for a bit?
Oh, please make yourself at home. And then also too, just one thing that you'll have to do at one point is just get sworn in by the town clerk before you make any votes with the Conservation Commission.
And I'll be in over on that.
Yep, a letter should be mailed to you and they just bring that to see Beth or Jean. All right?
We'll get that out tomorrow to you.
And then Mr. Velchenik, you're being appointed to the Social Media Committee? So do you mind just coming to the podium real quick?
Adam Velkwick, 372 Home Street in Hanson. Secret is kind of out of the bag a little bit because I started a Hanson Town Twitter page four years ago and ran it. I don't believe with any complaints, but.
Did have people saying, is this the official town?
Yes, I did have that, which I ignored. I just feel that I'm invested in the town in a positive way. I work a lot with the sports programs, Parks and Fields, and I've been talking to Steve, the IT person who runs the town current page. And it might be beneficial to everyone if someone who's in, actually is in the town, lives here, part of the community, because I have access to a lot more pictures and things I can put on the social media page. That's it.
All right, great. So you're just interested in running the Twitter side of things?
Yes, just the Twitter side of things. Facebook is a different animal.
Which is good.
We could, no, but I'm hoping they could coordinate and talk to one another.
All right, great.
So we'd get kind of a similar look and feel and, you know, kind of talking about the same things. But that's awesome. We definitely need to tweet.
Yes, agreed.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Mike.
Mr. Hickey.
Adam, you used the word positive in your opening statement. Is that going to mean that there won't be, you know, negative comments?
Not from me officially running the page. You know, the nice thing about Twitter is it's still a little bit newer. People don't have pages necessarily. So I've never dealt with comments in a negative light in four years to give an indication of what it's like versus the other platform that people are on.
Any other questions?
Just my standard question, any conflict? No, I don't believe so.
Okay, great. Excellent. Looking for a motion to appoint Mr. Velchenik to?
So moved.
Seconded, moved and seconded. All in favor? Four oh. Thank you guys.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thanks, Adam.
And then Ms. Mary Ann DiMascio, do you mind coming to the podium real quick?
Sure. Hello.
Hello. So what brings you in tonight?
What brings me in tonight? I wanted to talk about our annual cleanup that we have. It's, I think it's our 12th annual cleanup and we are reviving the Earth. We're still working on a name, Earth Festival. We used to have an Earth Day celebration. Great event that we had on the town hall for, I don't know, five, six, seven years. And we have, haven't done it for about five years. So we're revive, we want to revive a smaller version of that. So we'd have a cleanup on the morning of April 23rd from 9:00 to 11:00. This is what we're proposing. Sometime in between where we give, get pizza for the people who volunteered. And then from 11:30 to 1:30 have people, tables that are related to Earth-friendly practices, sustainable kind of things come in and then clean up and head out. And I'll just add also, we're not asking, we're particularly asking about that day to use the town hall green, but we're also doing a hybrid cleanup as we've done the last couple of years, where there's a two-week period from the 16th to the 30th where people can just pick a spot and clean up. And we've coordinated with the Highway Department to pick up bags. So we want to do that also. But the main thing is if we can get permission to use the town hall green.
Sure. And is there any other things that you need from the town of Hanson? This has been such a huge asset to our community and the environment. And I want to make sure the town is here to serve you guys as best as we can. Good. Is there any other asset that you need? Do you need picnic tables?
Highway.
Highway or anything like that?
Picnic tables are great. Didn't even, we were, we're meeting at 7 o'clock tonight to hammer out some of the details. So picnic tables, if we can get them, what, through the Highway Department or?
Yeah, yep, we can make that work. We can probably grab a couple. I think in the past, we grabbed a couple from Camp Kawani and brought them down. So whatever you, whatever, you know, after your meeting tonight, whatever you guys need, feel free to reach out to me and we'll make sure we get you what you need.
Million bucks?
I'll try, I'll try.
Sorry, that's against ethic rules. I'm not, I was not serious, everyone. I mean, one question, is it, if we get the okay, we're not, it's not a vendor fair. We're having people come to showcase things. But if in the case that someone has something that they may want to sell something sustainable, I didn't know if there are guidelines about, about that.
Okay.
We don't have guidelines, but there are some, there are some regulations about people using town property to sell things. So personally, whenever I've had like Hanson Day and that type of thing, I've always said that for, for that reason and also for the reason that I never want anybody to feel excluded because of some economic barrier, we've never allowed people to sell. But we could probably, I guess, ask Kate to look into it. But I, it's, it is, there is a regulation.
Okay, because I know in the past, we've, you know, with, whether it's Thomas Mill or even Camp Kawani with the wedding expo and stuff like that, people have sold things in the past.
But they paid to use the facility and rented it. That's the difference.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mary Ann, how many vendors would you be talking?
We have maybe 12, 15 tables at the moment of people like that are interested in doing something like the high school recycling, Seek Club and someone who's, I'm just trying to think of the list, someone who's coming from the Buy Nothing Project to talk about recycling items and the SoShore Wild Ones to talk about plants. So I was just envisioning, you know, if someone wanted to sell some plants or something like that. So we're, but if, if it's not possible, that's fine.
All right, yeah, I think maybe that's something that we can look into and then.
Just chat with Kate.
Yeah, chat with Kate and we'll look back. Well, we'll connect again on that.
Okay.
So I'm looking for a motion to approve Green Hanson's event, cleanup, green up and Earth Day for town hall use, April 23rd.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Four oh.
And thanks for bringing it back.
I hope you'll all come.
So excited. I look forward to it all the time. It's fantastic.
Great. So we're going to go back to the top of the agenda. MBTA draft guideline presentation from Tony DeFerris, our town planner.
Thank you. Okay, so this evening, as some of you may be aware of, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has created guidelines for towns and cities that have public transit, MBTA specifically. Hanson is a commuter rail town. And because it is a commuter rail town, the Commonwealth has issued guidelines that require towns with transit to create a multifamily zone by right. So I prepared a PowerPoint presentation, which I believe you have a copy of in your file, that goes over the guidelines as part of the compliance for 2022 with the state is that these guidelines are presented to the select board at a public hearing. We have to prove that that's been done along with filing a form with the state prior to May 2nd. May, I believe it's May 2nd of 2022. So if you have some popcorn and take that. I will try not to take too long.
Take as much time as you need, Tony.
I know you're busy.
May I just, is this technically considered the hearing?
Yes.
Okay.
So again, so what you have is, this is an overview of what's known as Section 3A of the Zoning Act. So in January 14th, 2021, the governor signed an economic development package, which is known as Chapter 358 of the Acts of 2020. Section 18 of that chapter added a new section to the Zoning Act, which is Chapter 40A of the General Bylaws. And that is applicable to all MBTA communities. And the purpose of Section 3A is to encourage MBTA communities to adopt the zoning districts where multifamily zoning is permitted as of right and that meet other requirements set forth in the statute. So an MBTA community shall have, and it's shall have, so we have to comply, shall have a zoning ordinance or a bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily use housing is permitted as of right. Provide, however, that such family housing, multifamily housing shall be without age restriction and suitable for families with children. So there is no over 55. This cannot be restricted for age. And they actually would prefer or encourage housing for families that have children. So for the purposes of this section, a district of reasonable size that the Commonwealth believes will work is one that has a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre. Chapter 40B, for instance, is about eight units per acre, I believe. And Chapter 40R, which is mixed use, is, I believe, 12 units per acre. So this is a little bit more. So they're looking for 15 units per acre, subject to any limitations imposed by Chapter 4, Section 40 of Chapter 131, which is the Wetlands Protection Act and Title V of the State Environmental Code. The zone has to be located not more than half a mile from the commuter rail station or subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station if applicable. So for, go ahead. For the Hanson, it's a commuter rail station located on Main Street. So definitions, what is a commuter rail community? Well, it means that an MBTA community with a commuter rail station within its borders or within half a mile of its border, no subway stations within its borders or half a mile of its border. This is what Hanson falls under. That's what it's defined as. Another significant definition is developable land, which means land owned, means land on which multifamily housing units have been or can be permitted and constructed. Developable land shall not include land underwater, wetland resource areas, areas lacking adequate water or wastewater infrastructure or capacity. Publicly owned land that is dedicated to existing public uses or privately owned land and covered by any kind of use restriction that prohibits residential use. Another definition that is relevant to Hanson would be multifamily housing, which means a building with three or more residential dwelling units or two or more buildings on the same lot with more than one residential dwelling unit in each building. Multifamily district, which means a zoning district including a overlay district in which multifamily uses are allowed by right. And reasonable size means not less than 50 contiguous acres of land with a unit capacity equal to or greater than the capacity specified in Section 5, which is the 15 units per acre. So the minimum size they want for this area to be is 50 acres. Taking half a mile radius from the train station, that would encompass a land mass of approximately 500 acres. So what they're looking for is basically one-tenth of that to be dedicated to the multifamily zone. Next slide, please. So the general principles of compliance. So the guidelines specifically address how to determine if a multifamily district has a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, again, subject to the Wetlands Protection Act and Title V. Section 3A, which of the Zoning Act mandates that such multifamily housing shall be without age restriction and shall be suitable for families with children to the extent to which MBTA communities have flexibility to choose the location of the multifamily district. The following general principles have informed the more specific compliance criteria that follow. MBTA communities should adopt multifamily districts that will lead to development of multifamily housing projects of a scale, density, and character that are consistent with a community's long-term planning goals. To the maximum extent possible, multifamily districts should be in areas that have safe, convenient access to transit stations for pedestrians and bicyclists. Allowing multifamily housing as of right to comply with Section 3A. A multifamily housing district must allow, again, multifamily housing as of right, which is a key thing. It's as of right. To comply with Section 3A, the district, again, must be as of right. And that the construction occupancy of the multifamily housing is allowed in the district without the need to obtain a discretionary permit or approval. Site plan. So it can't be something special. This has to be, again, as of right. It can't be, well, we'll allow it because of a special permit, et cetera, et cetera. But it does allow for a site plan review and approval by the town. So we do, so the town will have some control. So you have a site plan review process, which the local board will review the project's layout to ensure public safety and convenience. Site plan approval may regulate matters such as vehicular access, circulation on the site, architectural design, and screening of adjacent properties. Site plan review may not be used to deny a project that is allowed as of right, nor made in postconditions that make it infeasible or impractical to proceed with a multifamily use that is allowed as of right. So the town will have some control over, similar to a site plan for, let's say, a commercial site. You'll have the ability to look at architecture, traffic flow, parking, et cetera, et cetera. So the town would have to determine which board would control that site plan review process, whether it be the zoning board or the site, or the planning board.
And Ed, when would we do that? How would we do that?
That'll be part of the process. This is just the first step. So as we go through the steps, we'll be crafting a bylaw that will put all those mechanisms in place. Next slide, please. So the DHCD will take into consideration the area of the district and its multifamily unit capacity. So again, the minimum land area to comply, what they consider reasonable size, must comprise of 50 acres or approximately one-tenth of the land area of half a mile of the transit station, which I mentioned is a total of 500 acres. An overlay district is acceptable to achieve the compliance provided that one, such overlay district should not consist of a collection of small, non-contiguous parcels. At least one portion of the overlay district land area must include at least 25 contiguous acres of land. And no portion of the district that is less than five contiguous acres will count toward the minimum size requirement. So they are looking for, again, reasonable size. Okay. Reasonable size has to be large. This isn't that shoehorning, you know, a small area town saying, okay, that's what we're doing. They're, they're being pretty specific. So what determines reasonable size? The minimum multifamily unit capacity is one. A compliant, a compliant district, multifamily unit capacity must be equal to or greater than the specified percentage of total number of housing units within the community. The required percentage will depend on the type of transit service in the community. Hanson is a commuter rail community. Thus, 15% minimum multifamily units as a percentage of the total housing stock is required. In this case, that will be 750 units for Hanson. That's the minimum. As of 2020, there was 3,960 housing units. If you multiply that by 15%, that would equal 594. But the Commonwealth has set the floor at 750 units minimum. But what I want to let the board know is that the multifamily district unit capacity, it's not a mandate. It's not a mandate to construct a specified number of housing units, nor is it a housing target. This part of the bylaw of the Zoning Act, I'm sorry, requires only that the community has a multifamily zoning district of reasonable size. The law does not require the production of a new multifamily housing units within that district. There's no requirement nor expectation that a multifamily district will be built out to its full unit capacity. So the Commonwealth does have, next slide, please. So the Commonwealth does have some leeway. They do have some understanding, but it's not as if you just cannot do it, not do anything, you know? So the minimum gross density, the DHCD will deem a zoning district to be compliant with Section 3A, minimum gross density requirements if the foreign criteria met. One, district-wide gross density, again, 15 units per acre. And this will include land that's occupied by public rights of way and any recreational, civic, commercial, and other non-residential uses by. So that makes up part of it. So it's not just 15, 50 acres of contiguous land that's, let's say, one piece of land that's 50 acres that you're going to build on. This includes roads and so forth and so on. Achieving district-wide gross density by sub-districts. So to comply with the statute's density requirements, MBTA community may establish sub-districts within the multifamily district with different density requirements and limitations for each sub-district, provided that the gross density for the district as a whole meets, again, the 15 units per acre. Next slide, please. So determining suitability for families with children. Section 3A states that a compliant multifamily district must be without age restrictions and must be suitable for families with children. The DHCD will deem a multifamily district to comply with these requirements as long as the zoning does not require multifamily uses to include units with age restrictions and does not place any limits or restrictions on the size of the unit, the number of bedrooms, the size of the bedrooms, or the number of occupants. What will probably determine the number of bedrooms in Hanson is the fact of this is a non-Seward town. This is all Title V separate systems. So that might come into play, which the Commonwealth, based on the guidelines and the information that's been coming out to the different towns, understand. And it's also, they make it clear that clearly Title V could be a restriction. Wetlands, the Wetlands Protection Act can be a restriction. And in Hanson, those two definitely come into play to some degree heavily, depending on what part of town you're in. So the location of the districts. A compliant multifamily district, again, shall be located half a mile from a commuter rail station, subway, ferry terminal, or bus if applicable. The DHCD will interpret the requirements consistent with the following guidelines. A, that the general rule for measuring the distance from the transit station. The distance of half a mile is basically the parcel of land that the transit station is on, which includes the parking area. So it's not exactly, let's say, a spot on the platform. It's the piece of property that the transit station is on. B, MBTA communities with some land areas within half a mile of a transit station. This becomes an unusual cases where you have towns that may be, you may be, let's say, the next town over and they're within half a mile of a transit station. But they're, they do not have a transit station. They would have to create some housing near town to meet the requirement. C, MBTA communities with no land area within half a mile. You may have towns, there is another town not far from you, I won't mention the name, where the commuter rail station is sort of in the middle of nowhere. But they're going to have to find a way to sort of either, A, create some housing or create a connection from that housing to that station. So, next slide, please. Determinations of compliance. So once we create the bylaw and we're sort of rolling around with, and meeting what we're supposed to do here, DHCD will make a determination of compliance with Section 3 upon a request from the MBTA community based on the following criteria. A is file a request for compliance. In either case, such request shall be made on a form required by the DHCD and shall include a minimum of the following information. The general district information, location of the districts, the reasonable size metrics, the district gross density, housing suitable for families, and a testation. And then will we be in compliance? Next slide, please. Action plans and interim compliance. New and amended districts. So to achieve an interim compliance, a community must, no later than the date specified in the latest section of the guidelines, send to DHCD a written notice that the multifamily district send to DHCD a written notice that the multifamily district or an amendment of an existing multifamily district must be adopted and come into compliance with section three A. Currently Hanson does not have any multifamily districts. So that really doesn't apply here. The MBTA community must take the following action to maintain in compliance. Creation of an action plan. Each community must provide that, provide to DHCD with a proposal. An implementation of the action plan. And adoption of a zoning amendment. For commuter rail communities and adjacent communities, the DHCD will not approve an action plan with an adoption date later than December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. Four is determination of full compliance. Timeframes for submission to the by MBTA communities to remain in compliance must take one of the following actions no later than December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. Next slide, please. A, term and renewal of a determination of compliance. Once we have a determination of compliance, it'll have a ten-year term. So it's not forever. Each community will have to renew its certificate of compliance at least six months prior to expiration. This is similar to, let's say, the housing production plan that Hanson has. It has a five-year term, and then you have to reapply prior to its expiration to continue. Recession and determination of compliance. The DHCD reserves the right to rescind a determination of compliance if the DHCD determines that one, the community submitted inaccurate information on its application for determination of compliance. Or two, the community amended its zoning or enacted a general bylaw or other rule that materially alters the unit capacity in that multifamily district. So if you create it and then do something to affect it later, they will consider that non-compliance. So what are the effects if Hanson does not comply, or any MBTA community does not comply? If at any point the DHCD determines that an MBTA community is not in compliance with section three A of the zoning act, that MBTA community will not be eligible for funds from the following grant programs. One, the Housing Choice Initiative. Two, the Local Capital Project Fund. And three, the Mass Works Infrastructure Program. And I believe Hanson falls under the Mass Works? Lisa, was that correct? Mass Works?
Yes.
So if you do not comply, you will not be able to obtain grant money for any of those. And I believe that is the end of that part of the, excuse me. That comes to the end of the presentation, but I do have some other information. So what you see here is a map that is, is half a mile radius from the train station. So I'm going to approach the screen, just so I can point it out to you. This spot you see here is the train station. So this circle encompasses half a mile, which again is approximately five hundred acres. Jill and myself, and Jill actually did a great job of compiling the properties in that half a mile radius, which turns out to be two hundred and sixty-seven, seven, about two hundred and sixty-seven.
Yes.
Yeah, about two hundred and sixty-seven pieces of property. Now, obviously, there's not two hundred and sixty-seven pieces of property that are developable. I did go through actually all of them to see what was on those prop, what was on those properties. And we noted which ones were vacant, which ones had dwellings on them. So we can see which ones had the ability to maybe create housing. Obviously, down that part of town, you do have some, quite a few small parcels of land. But there are also some large tracts of land, so, but they're in private ownership. So there is potential down there for some vacant land if, once the zoning is created, that the private sector, knowing that zone is created, might approach these landowners to purchase the land. But again, it's all private ownership. So how to comply in two thousand and twenty-two? So the town must comply, and so as part of the process, as you see on how to comply, number one is include a presentation of the draft guidelines in the meeting of the select board, city council, or town council, which is what we're doing here tonight, which is number one. Then number two will be, I will complete a and submit the community information form. And that, they also have submit updated GIS maps, but that, there's only fourteen communities that require that. I had done some preliminary work as regarding the community information form. I plugged into town of Hanson. And there was no, at this point, there was no note, if you will, stating that we were out of compliance with our GIS. And so what you see here is a timeline that's expected of MBTA communities. So we're again commuter rail community. You know, deadline for public comments was end of March. Deadline to submit the community information form, which is what I just spoke of, is May the second, two thousand and twenty-two. Deadline for interim compliance will be December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. And the deadline for the action plan will be July first of two thousand and twenty-three. The deadline for adopting the new zoning will be December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. So we have time to craft that, but obviously, it's better to get ahead of the curve. And the deadline to apply for determination of compliance will be the thirty-first of March, two thousand and twenty-four. So that's the timeline that we have to work with. So it's not that we're under the gun, but we're better off to stay ahead of the curve. And that pretty much concludes my presentation of this information to the board. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Sure. Any questions from the board?
Very thorough.
Very thorough.
Tony, I had a couple of questions. So with this bylaw, and I know that this is probably jumping the gun a little bit, but is there a way that the town could designate affordable housing units towards this, just so we can kill two birds with one stone, or?
My understanding, based on the webinars, is a definite maybe, though it's an underlying yes. So I've also been examining forty R mixed use, which allows for affordable. And the criteria for MBTA zoning and forty R zoning are very similar. Specifically, half a mile from a transit station. The density is a little more on the MBTA. But my understanding is that we would be able to create the MBTA zone and create, in essence, an overlay with the forty R, allowing for creation of affordable housing in that district.
Can I just try and add on that, because this is an important point? I think, so one of the things people might have sort of caught their breath on was the encouragement of families moving into town. I should say, some people may have caught their breath. One, can you elaborate a little on the benefit of the forty R and the, and the MBTA being at the same overlay district and the incentives that are offered? This is something we've been talking about in the Economic Development Committee. So the incentive if the, I'm sort of leaving the witness, but the incentive for if the educate, if what we're bringing in in taxes is in excess of what the educational costs are for the children.
Yeah.
That piece of it.
Right. Forty R allows for a town to get some cash from the Commonwealth for creating affordable housing. In certain instances, if the taxes that are incurred cannot pay for the child, then there is what's known as forty S, which a town can tap into to get the difference in the taxes. My understanding is that it is available, but because the taxes usually tend to work out, not many towns apply for that. But it is out there. And again, this MBTA zone, it clearly states that they want it to be for children, multifamily, you know, and no age restrictions. So the two sort of go hand in hand. And, and again, the density, I think, is what's the difference, the biggest difference. But they still both want to be within half a mile of a transit station. So, you know, as we start to go through this bylaw, we start, we have to look at, okay, what's the zoning for the district? And how do we create this zone so that it allows for the construction of the multifamily unit? Yet we have to have room for septic systems. This becomes a big, big case down in that, throughout town, but especially down in that part of town. There is a known as a zone two that kind of traverses part of that area, which limits the number of bedrooms per acre unless you have an innovative system. But, you know, or still you have, it limits the number of bedrooms per acre, or you have to have credit land. So we have to sort of look at the area as a whole and determine, okay, what's the best way to make this all work?
So, so based off of that, I just want to reiterate one of your points and make sure I understood this correctly. So unlike some other, like forty Bs or whatnot, where they can kind of come in and just bulldoze bylaws. This bylaw here, or this program here, isn't necessarily allowing a developer to come in necessarily? And then foresee Wetland Protection Act and stuff like that, correct? Or is it going to be, or is it the latter?
Well, this is going to be as of right. So if someone has, for instance, an acre of land, and they, and the zone is created, they have the ability as of right to come in, if it's all upland, and they can make the septic system work, they're allowed to put fifteen eight, fifteen units on that acre of land. That has to be as of right for them to do.
But they still have to comply with the other bylaws. I think what Matt's saying is they can't circumvent Wetlands Protection, you know, all.
No, no.
So our local by, which forty B, we know, you know, there's, basically, they just throw out all the local bylaws, give them an order of conditions, and they can do whatever they want. But with this, they're still in compliance with the local bylaws.
Yes, yes. This, this is not forty B regulations. This is, this is a different animal.
All right, perfect.
So they, they would still have to comply. As you saw in the presentation, there would still be site plan review that allows, you still have control. You'll have a site plan review. You'll be able to look at the architecture. You'll be able to look at the parking. You'll be able to look at the site. You just won't be able to, you can't necessarily deny the project because someone doesn't like it. It has to be a specific reason, and if that bylaw is in there, you just can't say no. It has to be a specific reason to determine that, you know, it's not safe. There's some kind of public health hazard or something that would prevent that project from being viable.
All right, great, excellent. And then I guess my last comment is, as we go forward with this, you know, it's, I know that folks are going to be nervous about high density and then changing the characteristics of our town. And, and you and I in private conversation had discussed, you know, trees and maximizing, you know, tree planting. So in, is, if there's any way to be able to make sure that we reassure ourselves that there's going to be maximum tree plantings or increased tree plantings, rather than just the one tree after they knocked down, you know, cut down hundreds. You know, if there's a way to incorporate this into this kind of bylaw, I think that's something that we need to really make sure that we stay focused on is that we keep the characteristics of our town, because that's why people are moving to Hanson.
Right.
You know, they're, they're choosing Hanson over Rockland or Waymouth, because, as you know, it's, it's quaint.
Right.
And these characteristics in towns are changing rapidly because of development. So I think that's one thing I would love to see as we move forward drafting this bylaw, that we maximize, you know, that aspect of life.
Yeah, the, the, obviously, as you well know, the area down in South Hanson has its own characteristic. You know, so a lot of the homes there are older, probably from the late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds, so they have their own character. You know, so it's, you know, you could look at, as part of the bylaw, the architectural, how do you, how would you like it to look? Do you want, do you want it to look like downtown Boston, or do you want it to look like Cape Cod Village? Or do you want it to look like Hanson's own unique South Hanson village architecture with some of the styles that are down there? So you, you do have some, you do, the town will have some control there. It's not, it's not as if someone can just come in and do what they want, put up what they want. The town will still get control. Again, the state is not telling the town, you have to construct this many units. It's, you have to create a zone to allow for the construction of that many units. They understand, they seem to understand at this point that it's not a one-size-fits-all. Every town is going to be specific. It's going to be custom to how to make it work. You may have areas that are not within the half a mile, and you may have to sort of stretch out a little bit. But what they want in those scenarios is that they, they want the ability for the folks living in those dwellings to be able to get to the transit via bike, sidewalk, or motor vehicle.
Excellent. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Hickey?
Yeah, thanks, Matt. Tony, so fifty acres would be ten percent of the five hundred, and I don't want to assume anything, but you've obviously calculated it out, and we can get to that. And one of them has to be at least twenty-five acres. Did I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay, so twenty-five acres would be approximately two hundred and seventy-five units. And I'm only asking this question because I have no idea what the answer would be. Are we looking at two hundred and seventy-five septic systems? Or if the units are packed in, or put in, you know, either six, you know, units to a, to a house? I mean, to a, to a unit, six houses to a unit? You know, are there six septic systems, or are there only two?
If you would create a multifamily home, let's just use a three-family, for example, then you would design a septic system that would encompass the three family. It wouldn't be, it would be one system to service the three family, which would be based on the number of bedrooms. So for instance, let's say each unit had two bedrooms. Then that's six bedrooms, so you'd have a septic system that's designed to six hundred and sixty gallons per day. And that's what it would have to treat. So it'd be one system depending on the number of bedrooms. So if you had a larger develop, let's say you had a larger building that had
Ten.
Ten, same thing. You're going to, you're going to base it on the number of bedrooms. If you had ten units and they're each two bedrooms, that's twenty bedrooms, you have to design a system that's going to match, be for the twenty bedrooms.
Okay, but that's ten different families living in the unit.
Yes.
My concern would be, how would the septic get emptied?
When you say emptied, treated, or?
Well, let's just, you know, every year, or every two years, or three years, depending on when it needed to be emptied.
Right.
I mean, is there a condo fee, or?
Well, I, they have not delved into whether it's an HOA or anything at this point. But I think it's probably fair to think that that's probably the way it would go. If you have a building that's ten units, if they're individually owned, like a condo type of situation, then yes, there'd be an HOA that would maintain that septic system and just as if they had to maintain the roof or the building itself. If it's a rental, then obviously the landlord would be responsible for the maintenance.
Okay. The only reason I ask that is there's going to be a lot of stuff going on underneath, you know? You know, whether, you know, it's septic system, wires, you know, all that stuff going that you don't see. That would be a, you know, concern for me, and I would just, you know, thanks.
Yeah, no, it's something that, you know, we would actually look at, you know? Because we're beginning the first step, you know, we have, let's say, a hundred steps. This is step one. And the state is continuing to give us guidelines. They, as a matter of fact, this past week, there was a paper that was released that was sort of answers to some questions, common questions. There wasn't anything new information, but it was just, they just answered some questions, I guess, that have been posed to them. So they're going to continue to release information on this. And through OCPC and other organizations, I've been going through the webinars to get the most information. And so, and I get notified of them, so I get on to them and see what, if any new information is coming down the line, so we can stay up to date. So it's, it's a process. The good thing is, you know, they have given towns till two thousand and twenty-four, so they have given us some time. But obviously, again, we need to get, we need to stay ahead of the curve and not play catch-up. So, you know, now that we have this, we're in our first step of compliance before that May deadline. And then we, we're going to go into step two, and we start looking at, okay, how do we craft a bylaw? I would think and hope that the Commonwealth might issue some, we'll call example bylaws, which they have in the past for certain things. You know, here's a bylaw that you could craft something similar to this, and make it custom to Hanson. You know, and add things or remove things that don't work for the town of Hanson.
Any other questions?
Yeah, and I, I hope that when we get to that step, in order to be responsive to Matt's concerns and some of the concerns that have come up in the Economic Development Committee about the look and feel and trying to get a consistent look, so it's not like a Jetson-looking place next to a Victorian-type of place, you've got some consistency there. I hope we would have a visioning session that would include the planning board, you know, the Board of Selectmen, the general public, the Economic Development Committee. I think that would be a really ideal way for us to make sure that we've got people's concerns reflected in that bylaw. Because it's clear that we lose a lot if we don't adopt this. And probably it's an encouragement for us to do the forty R, which helps us with forty B in the future. So kind of makes sense to me to bring all those stakeholders together, but I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get to it.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, you know, that, that's part of the process, you know, to get in, in input. Because sure, I think there's, there'll be residents that'll be like, wow, what is this? You know, I've, since this has come in, I've heard feedback from folks, you know. Some towns, through the webinars, other towns sort of feel like it's, the Commonwealth is sort of, lack of a better term, shoving it down the town throats. But it's part of creating, they're trying to create neighborhoods that are more reliant on public transit versus automobiles. And obviously, with the climate change, this is what they're trying to do. So you're creating these neighborhoods. As, you know, if you've grown up in a city, it's the same thing. You have, it's a dense, dense areas, and you have little neighborhoods, and that's what they're trying to, the state's trying to create and base it around the transit, so that, again, more public, more public transit use versus automobile. They have visioning sessions, Mass Housing Partnership, it's on a webinar there. You know, they have visioning of these areas where it's mostly walkable. You may have where folks, say, like in New York City, some folks born, live, work in a neighborhood and die in a neighborhood, because everything is there. And I think that they're trying to say, to create a similar model. We'll see what the success rate is, you know? I grew up in a city, and it was a neighborhood, and down the street was the pharmacy. When I grew up, there was the pharmacy, there was a grocer, there was a furniture store, everything was in walking distance, you know? So that's what they're trying to create here, especially there was a furniture store, everything was in walking distance, you know, uh, so that's what they're trying to create here, especially in towns like Hanson and the, with the suburbs. So, they, you know, it, it is a lot to take, but, uh, I think if we, everyone puts our heads together, we could probably figure out something and come up with something that maybe could be a model for the, of other towns.
I'm very interested in that. I think, uh, they're trying to, it sounds to me like they're trying to, uh, address energy issues with the housing crisis, but we'd also don't wanna lose the flavor of what it is to live in Hanson. I'm very eager to see what you guys come up with. Um, I think it's gonna be exciting, by law, to kind of build and, and, and see what you can do, so. You have a lot of work ahead of you, but it sounds like you got it figured out, so I'm really excited to see where you take it.
Well, we're trying. Jill, uh, had been in the planning board, has been a great asset, uh, doing research and pulling information, uh, for me to look at. So, we've been working together, trying, uh, stay ahead of the curve.
Tony, do you need any votes from us tonight?
Uh, I suppose just for the sake of procedure, if you voted to, that you were, had the guidelines presented to you, uh, that you voted, that, you know, they were presented to you and that you, you've seen and understood them, uh, that'll probably help when, because what I have to do is submit a copy of the minutes that this was done at, at the pub, at the, at the public hearing. So, I think maybe as a matter of procedure, you could do that.
Sure. I'm looking for a motion, um, of acknowledgement of tonight's presentation by the town planner.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded, uh, all in favor? Uh, four oh. Tony, Jill, thank you very much. A lot of work went into this, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Um, so with that being said, um, we, we don't have anyone coming in to discuss, uh, pond management, right?
No, that would be up to me.
All right, um, and I'm gonna skip down just to try to get people in and out where I can. Um, uh, Chief Thompson, uh, what brings you in tonight?
I recognize, uh, some disclosures I filed and then figured out today if you wanted to discuss the administrative assistant appointment.
All right, great. Um, if, um, if you want, uh, join us at the podium. If you want to join us at the podium, then we'll get you in and out real quick.
Uh, there's also, uh, my, my employment agreement's on there too, so we're under all business, so.
Under all business, sure. So they get you in and out, we can take care of it all. Um, so the first thing on the agenda for under new business for Chief Thompson is to recognize two, um, two sixty-eight A disclosure forms, uh, for Chief Thompson. Um, so let me just get there real quick. Uh, any questions from the board?
Seems pretty straightforward.
All right. Yeah?
Good.
All right, I'm looking for a motion, uh, just to acknowledge that we had received, uh, Chief Thompson's, um, disclosures.
So moved.
Seconded.
Uh, all in favor? Uh, four oh. All right. And, um, next item for Chief Thompson, under all business, uh, execute, uh, fire chief contract, um.
Which Lucia actually just ran, went to grab them.
Okay, great.
She'll be right back with them. There we have it.
Ms. Cullen?
I didn't know if we might wanna just start with the assistant.
Okay, yep, we can move on to the assistant. So Chief Thompson?
Yeah, so it's on the agenda, so, um, we've been notified by our administrative assistant that, um, she's gonna be retiring in July. Um, so I felt it was prudent to, uh, working with Lisa to move forward and try to get this position filled sooner than later so we can start the transition process. There's a lot of things in, in our, my department that that administrative assistant does that, quite honestly, I don't know. We've just transitioned over to an ambulance billing company, so right now, uh, our current administrative assistant is learning that process. But I felt that it'd be important to at least get that position picked so we can start doing a transition, and obviously where that position is gonna be coming in from the town hall, I'm sure that Lisa's, you guys are gonna wanna fill that position, and we need to work out a whole transition so it's smooth for everybody. So I thought sooner than later was better. Um, I had given Lisa, um, a letter on who we recommended. I'll just briefly, um, we had a process, um, we had two internal candidates apply for the position, and we thought it would be best to put them through an interview process. So both candidates were brought in and put through a process. We had the administrative assistant from the town of Duxbury Fire Department. We had the town of Duxbury's Human Resource Director and the Fire Chief from the town of Halifax interview both candidates. They were put through some, um, scenarios to see how they were with Excel, how they would do with our computer programs, and also asked a series of questions, and their employment packet was reviewed. And at the end of that process, the candidates were ranked number one and two. And as you'll see, um, my forward to the town administrator, that I would recommend that, that the board appoints, um, the person that was ranked number one. And obviously, that appointment would begin when, um, we get the exact date that my administrative assistant is leaving, which is probably mid, end of July.
So, um, I think for the sake of transparency, we ought to name the person?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, so Anne Marie Bouzanne, you're recommending that Anne Marie be, be appointed?
Yes.
Okay.
So with that being said, I'm looking for a motion to appoint Anne Marie Bouzanne, um, to fill the vacancy of the Fire Department's administrative assistants upon her retirement. So moved. Moved. Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Uh, four oh.
I, I do have a question, um, and I know it's kind of soon in the process, but I, I think I know the way your mind is working, Lisa. Have we already started to think about, um, a transition plan? Um, and I assume, based on this vote tonight, we're gonna get on ASAP on trying to fill that position?
Yes, well, it will be posted in-house, um, as required by the contract. Um, and as soon as, actually, um, just to make a quick correction, Anne Marie Bouzanne will begin at the, um, Fire Department once Barbara Murphy, who fills that position currently, retires in, in July.
July first?
So we're, we, we're trying to get the date that she'll, that she's going to retire, um, so we know what we can work with, because we wanna minimize the impacts to the department, um, with, with the transitions. So, yeah, I have Lucia working on the posting already, and then we're just, I'll work with Chief Thompson and, um, Carrie Glass on maybe putting some dates together.
So should we amend the vote? Cause it makes it seem as though she's starting immediately, cause we didn't say otherwise.
Like, I thought you'd said upon the retirement.
Upon, when, when Barbara Murphy. Is it possible she'll start before then, though?
You've got training here, so I'm just trying to figure out.
Yeah, so the, 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 um, the thought process on that is to have, um, Anne Marie spend some time over with Barbara for training. Um, and then, once we post the in-house position in the time, and then if we get candidates, we'll arrange a, an interview process with the department head and then the Board of Selectmen. Uh, once the, that candidate is chosen and appointed, then that candidate will spend some time with Anne Marie. And again, we need to work out all the, the semantics to, to minimize the impact on the department, since we only basically have two people in each department.
I, I appreciate that, but where I'm going is money, okay? Because if we're not clear about when this happens, an argument could be made that it's now, or that it's at the retirement of Barbara, but if we're actually asking Anne Marie to do that job earlier than when Barbara retires, we have to have clarity on that. So maybe for tonight, we could just agree that she'll be appointed at a date to be determined in the future, and that you'll come back to us with the more solid, once, you know, some of those logistics have worked out.
Right, and as far as the money part of it, um, it is anticipated that the department, uh, the departments that are impacted by it will need to maybe ask for a, yeah, reserve fund transfer, um, to, to cover the amount for the salaries for the both people while they're training.
Okay.
Good, okay. I can just clarify. The way I see it is if it's an internal candidate that's gonna backfill the position here, we should be able to work that all together on how we can do it without having no vacancies in each department. But I would foresee that, that Ms. Bouzanne would have to come in and do, work at least two weeks with Barbara, so there would be some overlapping and a possible cost depending on, um, any vacation buyout and stuff like that.
All right, thank you. I ju- I hope you appreciate, um, coming from the perspective of a union, um, contracts and being specific with dates. So, all right, thanks.
Excellent. Um, all right, and then just to go back up, um, to, um, the contract, um, execute fire chief's contract. Um, so, uh, the contract itself will be on file in the selectman's office, if anyone cares to go through it. Um, it's for, um, ending, uh, the, the contract will be from July first, twenty twenty-one, uh, tw- twenty twenty, ending on July thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, and it's on contract. Are there any other details that you guys would like me to fill the public in on? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion?
So moved.
Uh, moved, seconded, uh, all in favor? Four oh. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Diane.
All right, um, going down the list, um, I see Mr. Moberg, um, in the audience.
Good evening. Hello, how's everybody?
Good, how are you?
Okay.
So Steve, as our, uh, IT director, uh, what, uh, what updates do you have for us this week?
Um, so we are, uh, actively, um, changing over our badging, our two badges, as you're seeing Mr. Hickey's got one. I think the rest of you guys just need to get some photos taken, and, uh, Charlie Baker's been really heading, helping us a, a lot on that aspect. He's kind of been helping with more facility stuff and getting involved. Um, so I'd really like to thank Charlie for his, his dedication. So, uh, we're actually going to be taking away some of the boards and committees' key card accesses, and they'll have visitor badges that they can get from the selectman's office. More for accountability, so we know what's going on inside this building after hours. Uh, I was here late one night, and it was after a meeting. The meeting got out maybe about nine-ish. And it's, I heard somebody go up the stairs, was in upstairs for a little while, thought it was a town employee. Uh, right around like nine forty-five-ish, somebody had walked down the stairs, and I thought it was kind of odd that somebody was still here. So I poked my head out and it was somebody, I had no idea who they were. It was kind of, so they were up here for forty-five minutes, room and gender out there on hallways.
That's alarming.
So, you know, we're taking a lot of these things away so we can have accountability of who's coming in and out of the building. So, that's kind of.
Excellent. Um, so Steve, I just kind of wanna run this through, uh, just run it through a scenario of, okay, I'm on a committee.
Yep.
Um, I'm just a regular citizen at this point. I have a, I have a meeting at town hall, so this individual would have to go to the selectman's office?
Or just call, they can call Lucia, or Lisa, whoever's upstairs at the moment, and just say, hey, I'd like to have a meeting at town hall. Which meeting rooms are available? And they can, you know, they'll pull up the calendar, we have it all on Outlook calendar now. So they can check out which meeting rooms are booked, um, and to give them, you know, a, a meeting room, and then let them know that they have to come in and get a, a visitor badge, and that they're only allowed access from, you know, this time to that time, whatever they need. So if they say, we need eight to ten, well, we'll give you access from eight to ten. At that same time, we did, um, we have a camera and a, uh, a push button right on the front, on the side door here. So if somebody does come there, if they push that button, me and Charlie get a call on our phone immediately, so we can see who it is, we can talk to them, we can communicate, and we can also, from our phones, unlock that door.
Excellent.
So we've set that up too, as well.
Excellent. And so, uh, so I have the key card now, I just swipe it on the side of the door.
Yep.
Do my meeting, and then at the end of the meeting.
You can just leave it right in the, um, there's a Dropbox right there.
There's a Dropbox right outside the door.
Bills and everything else, right? So you just drop it right in there, and we'll get it in the morning. Yep, or if you don't feel, you can bring it back whenever you want, but.
Excellent. So, um.
So if I could also just add on to that, um, in the past and since I've been here, we've had instances of meetings in the buildings and then the doors being open all night.
Yep.
Because, you know, people had a lock with keys. Um, this process alleviates all of the doors being open and possibly being left open all night. Um, right now, we currently, we have two visitor badges, um, available, and I just wanted to ask the board, because some of the committees, um, have expressed concern that, oh, you know, it, it's, it, it's just not feasible for me to have to come and get a badge every time, um, you know, why can't I just keep it? And what we're trying to move away from is having so many people out there with these little blue fobs or keys that can get into this building, um, and really not having an awareness, as Steve said, of who's in the building and, and walking around and things like that. So, um, I mean, these badges, we're making it as easy as possible for people to get these, um, and drop them off. We currently have one that's out that has not been returned to us yet. We only have two visitor badges right now. But I just wanted to ask the board, um, their thoughts on whether we wanna get into the habit of issuing a visitor badge for every committee out there, and have them hold on to these, so that now we're falling back into, everybody's got one of these, and as committees move on and things like that, these are still floating around out there that allow access to the building. Although, they can program these cards so that they don't work, but then we are expending resources on making these up. Or if the, if the board likes the idea of having just the couple of badges that we can get out to the committees when they meet, then they could just drop the badge, bike back in for the next committee. Completely, uh, you know, I wanna ask the board's thoughts on what direction they'd like to move in.
And could I just, before you vote, um, the, the reason a lot of this kind of works together is because we did put those meeting rooms in Outlook. So if they do call in, they can request a badge, request a meeting room, and, you know, if they need Charlie or anything else, right at that one phone call, instead of making multiple calls and whatnot. So it kind of, you know, consolidates everything. So now the board of, the selectman's office knows what's going on, instead of kind of going, there's a meeting tonight? Oh, we didn't know. That's been happening a lot. So having everything kind of filtered to the selectman's office, so they can kind of control the access to, well, uh, we, you know, they control who's going in where, what's going on, and who's gonna be in the off, into the building, I think is a good idea.
Ms. Cullen?
Uh, I do like us bringing it in, that's clearly overdue. I do get concerned when you've got a committee, for instance, Community Preservation. They meet the first Wednesday of every month at a certain time, and it doesn't, you know, we have enough trouble getting volunteers and getting committees to meet on a regular basis, et cetera, et cetera. Um, it seems to me as though we could use the same model that we have at my work, which is you pre-program the access, and people have got certain access, and if they need beyond that, then it, they'd have to check in with us. But I, I fear if you don't do that, you and Charlie will be getting calls, like, every night from people that either don't know how to book in, or they, or the, somebody different had the badge, or, and, and I hear what you're saying, but I'm thinking just the chair of, like, and, and I'm not saying every single small little committee, like Maquon, Reuse, or whatever, but some of the, you know, like ZBA, we know they meet regularly, Conservation Commission, we know they meet regularly here. Um, Historic Commission, they meet regularly, Community Preservation. There's probably five or six committees that meet on a regular basis. And I would just like to see us be a little bit more collaborative with, um, the committees and really, you know, cause I, it is a bit of an inconvenience. I mean, I, it's not like, and I'm not suggesting you guys should be, but it's not like you're here till eight o'clock every single night of the week, and people do work, you know? And, and I just am fearful that if we're too restrictive, you know, what, what kind of a message is that saying? So I think we could maybe strike the happy medium by the ones that are regularly meeting on a regular basis, um, reach out to the chair, get, say, look, we're, we're, we're only going to program this for the first Wednesday of every month. If something changes, you're gonna have to contact our office. Um, and then, so you've got like five or six of those, and then I think adopt the policy that you've suggested for everybody else. That's just.
No, I ca- I agree with Laura, there's probably only gonna have five or six committees. Rec doesn't need it, Parks and Field doesn't need it, there's tons of them that don't need it. Um, and right now, we have two visitor passes, and you said, in the way you put it, Lisa, one is still out. So I don't need.
That, that committee hasn't, they, they haven't returned it yet.
And I don't need to know what, who that committee is, but evidently, they didn't use the Dropbox.
Right.
Or they just, whatever. So we only have one visitor.
And when you, you have to sign it out, and I put a disclaimer at the bottom, I don't have it in front of me, but basically says, like, if you misuse the building, you no longer will be able to have public meetings. You're, you're not public, but you will no longer have, be able to use the building after hours. Because again, there's been a lot of stuff that's happened, doors left open, trash is over the place, Charlie has to come in and clean up after everybody. It's not kind of, you know? So, I mean, that's the other problem, even, I know that there's four or five committees that may need it, but then those four or five committees, if they're not actively shutting the door behind them, or cleaning up after themselves, now it's kind of like, oh, who was here last night? Now we're kind of chasing it around a bit, too.
I think if it's four or five committees.
Yeah.
It's very easy to identify who is and is not, um, you know, using the building appropriately, and to address it with those particular committees. Right now, it's a hodgepodge.
Yeah.
You know, the Wild West, you don't know who's coming or whatever.
Yep.
Uh, I, I, I just know how I would, uh, feel. Uh, I, I, I just know how I would feel if I were on one of those committees, and I was told, you've got to come up to Town Hall every, in addition to all the other stuff you've got to do, you've got to, you know, come up to Town Hall and get a visitor's badge every week.
Yep. No, but I agree, I, I think if we can have the chair of whichever committees need the, to use the Town Hall, I think, um, I think issuing each committee a badge, I think is appropriate. Not every committee member, but just one per committee, I think is fine, just because, as you said, Laura, it's...
I will say, there was a committee u- using Joe Weeks' card. So anytime that that person would come in, it would say, Joe Weeks entered the building.
Me?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, my word. Okay, but that's on the path, that's on the path.
I didn't have a card.
So, probably one of those fobs.
It was one of the fobs. So I don't know if maybe at one point you may, somebody may have asked for it, and you were just like, it could have been months upon months ago, and you were like, oh, yeah, sure, use my card.
I've been waiting for a fob since I got here.
Oh, really?
I've never gotten a fob.
Oh, well, you had one.
Someone stole it.
Somebody had it.
Someone took it.
So, so basically, well, I mean, because they were just little gray ones, so, you know, so maybe it was, maybe it was me, for instance. You know, I mean, I got Joe's by accident when we got new ones, you know, so whatever.
Yeah.
So it sounds like there's still kinks in the, kinks to be worked out.
Right, right, and that's what we're, that's why I was trying to pull it in a little bit and trying to, you know, just get, because there's been so much chaos, and like, okay, well, this is the best way to do it, we now have it like a chain of command, like, you know, like, we know exactly what's going on, who's going to be in the building and when. But, you know, I do understand how it can be, you know, kind of a pain to, if there is, you know, monthly meetings, that somebody has to come, but I feel like most of the people live in Hanson, so it's not like it's, you know, the driving, you know? But again, I do understand, I do understand.
I would say even just, I know myself, if I had to, if I had to come and grab a key from Lisa's every, because I'm meeting, I'm in...
Eventually, but eventually you would go, oh my, you would, you would stop, that might happen two or three times, and then eventually you'd be like, oh, I gotta go do that.
Well...
I, that's how I feel, but I mean, maybe I'm wrong.
Right, but I would, I would say someone that's actively involved in the town, like myself.
Yeah.
I'm in Town Hall three nights out of the week.
Yep.
And for me to stop in, grab that from Lisa...
Yeah, but that's different.
Or if, you, you know, I'm just saying that, I think that, uh, each committee should just be issued a card, and if we need to take a vote on it, um, it'd be...
I agree.
I, I would just say, uh, just for me, I just like to use the keep it simple method. Um, I'm for whatever you want to do, as long as you're available to...
Yep.
This is a public building that the public is allowed access to.
Not after hours.
To a degree, no, to a degree.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So as long as we're not restricting the public's ability to utilize this building, then I'm willing to follow your leads, because you're doing the day-to-day interaction, and then as we kind of roll things out, we just figure out how to make it more efficient, better, and more suitable to pretty much everybody. So my personal opinion is, I will, in my opinion, we don't need a vote, it's just, we'll follow your lead, roll out the wrinkles as we go, and just go from there, as long as you're not too bugged by people calling you all the time. Because I could, I could see, because I've been there before, where someone says, you know, the chair decides, you know, la- very last minute, can't get access, how do we get the vice chair, or somebody else in, or something else is going on? There's a lot of volunteer people, you know, using volunteer time to try to make, you know, good things happen, so, um, I just say, keep it simple. Whatever you want to do, I'll back it, and then we roll out the wrinkles as we go.
Yeah, and we want to make it easy as well, I mean, we don't want to create any barriers or any red tape for anybody go to. So we do want to make it easy, um, but at the same time, securing the building and alleviating overtime for Charlie to have to come back here and wait around for a meeting to finish up, so that he can make sure all the doors are locked, because that, that's overtime that we pay, that we pay him. So, um, you know, this will, this will, um, really help safeguard and move us forward. Um, and, you know, we can certainly issue the badges for, and put the committee name on it, um, and get them for those committees that, that meet regularly, because like I said, we, we don't want to hinder it, and we don't want to make it difficult, but at the same time, we want to have some security for the building.
Ms. Kavan?
I, I think, I, I like that idea very much of the, you know, frequent meters, um, you know, getting, um, that. And then maybe to be responsive to your concerns and yours of people cleaning up or whatever, when, um, the chair is first given that, um, badge, perhaps you could have rules of engagement that they have to sign and just acknowledge.
Okay.
I would also just say, you know, just for the sake of whatever this is worth, um, whatever the committees are, you know, whoever is the appointing authority, if someone that we're appointing is abusing the, the, the space, the cards, I'm very interested in how my key fob got into someone else's hands.
Yeah, I mean, it was before I started.
Yeah, so, stuff like that, let us know, because we need to know who we're appointing to these committees, and if it's like, you know, um, finance committee or something like that, I'm sure the town moderator would want to know as well, because that would take into consideration an appointment for the future. We want to make sure that people are actually locking up these doors and taking it seriously.
And, and that, you know, that was one thing that, that was difficult, because there were so many keys floating around out there, we didn't know who had them. Um, and same thing with the fobs. I mean, people had these little blue things, and they was like, oh, here, here, go ahead and use mine. And that person would never get it back, so now we have this person, and that person be like, oh, you know what, I'm not going to be there, so here, here's the fob. So passing around keys, passing around these little fobs, and then you don't know who's got what. Um, and i- it just, like I said, i- it creates a, a security, um, concern
Yeah.
with who can be in the, who's going to be in these buildings, and with, with the day and age going on, you don't, you, we just really want to make sure our employees in the building is as safe as possible.
Just one last thing, I just want to make sure that we're being very proactive about letting everybody know that would be possibly meeting in Town Hall, that we're moving towards this. I, I don't want people showing up, it, it actually happened a couple of weeks ago, I think. Tom Hickey showed up for Community Preservation, he couldn't get in, and they, they had a quorum, but they couldn't meet. Um, so I, I, I just would not want to see that repeated again. Um, I, I want to really honor volunteers' time, um, and, and, um, you know, their dedication.
Absolutely, we'll send an email out to everybody to let them know.
Perfect.
One last thing.
Yes.
Um, earlier tonight, you guys appointed Adam. He has social media.
Yeah.
He's the one that I had shut down. Hope you are aware of that. And then, but as he was walking out, he said to me he wanted access to the Twitter account. So...
Okay, so can you elaborate a little bit on what you're saying?
So, um, there was a rogue Twitter account.
Yes.
Remember that?
Yes.
And I had reached out, and I tried to get some information from that person, and that person would never reach out, would never...
I see, yeah, that's probably...
That's who it was, so now he's part of the, he nominated himself.
Right, so, right, and I, I chatted, I chatted with Adam offline, and, um, we, we, we talked at length about it. And I, I feel confident that he'll do the right thing, um, and you and I can talk offline about this if you want.
Yep.
Um, and go from there.
Okay.
So, um, and then, what, there was one last thing that, um, you may be forgetting, but it's Cyber Security Awareness Month.
Yes.
That's our tour.
And, well, now, now it's going to be March too. Um, I declare it, you know, but, um...
Hanson Cyber Security.
Yeah, yeah. But, um, just for everyone that has issued a Town email, um, there is, there's an email that went out that we have to do our training. Um, and this is, this is not just your average training, this is tied to grant money. So we have to make sure that everyone with the Town email takes this seriously, goes through, does their training, so that way we stay eligible for these IT grants that are issued by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
When do we need to, I, I have been doing my training, I haven't finished all of it, but I have been doing some of it.
Yeah.
Um, when do we need to complete that?
It's like a, it's a year-long thing, you have the whole year to do it.
Oh, okay.
She don't do like, finish it today, or whatever, you have a whole year to do it. Uh, but there was only four communities that actually got it. So there was only four out of this whole South Shore that actually took it serious. So I'd like to at least, you know, I mean, I, I don't expect us to get there, but at least if we moved a little bit forward and, you know, made some of the staff aware about cybersecurity, that'd be great.
And then also to...
I've gotten some calls. Hey, I clicked on this, oh, boy.
So, and then also too, talking about clicking onto things, um, that, part of this program that the Commonwealth actually will send you phishing emails.
Yep.
To make, to see if you actually click, to see if you actually paid attention, so just be aware of that. Um, so just think twice when you're, um, doing that. So, um, Lisa, if you can send out a memo to all the departments, just asking everyone to...
That it's okay to click on this and do the training.
Yes.
It's more than okay, we really want to get that grant money.
Yes.
I mean, if only four communities in the South Shore have completed, completed it, we would have a much better competitive edge if we're one of five communities that's completed it.
Right.
So, yeah.
Perfect, so, all right, anything else?
That's it.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate all of the hard work that you've been doing, Steve.
Thank you.
I've been seeing your trucks here late at night, so, uh, thank you for going above and beyond. So, um, Chief Mix, uh...
You need me at the end too, so...
You need, uh, all right. Arlene, are you here for any business, or?
Yeah.
All right, great, well, welcome. So we'll go back to the top of the agenda and work our way down, uh, discuss and approve Pond Management Endangered Species Survey. Ms. Green?
Yes, so, um, if the board remembers back in the October Special Town Meeting, um, the, a line item was created for pond management, which falls under the Selectmen. And, uh, this is a first step of pond management, um, undertaken by the Conservation Commission. And this is a freshwater mussel survey. Um, apparently there are some types of mussels that are considered endangered species. So, uh, this is an agreement with, I believe this is the only gentleman in state that does this type of survey, where he actually goes into the water and, and dive, snorkels and, and scuba dives, and looks for these particular type of mussels, um, in our ponds. And if they are detected, um, it allows for better planning as far as pond management to deal with, um, the invasive species algae. Um, and I know over last summer, there was an invasive species, which Matt may remember the name of, Bumblegala or...
Uh, uh, the, uh, bub- not Bubblewart, um, the...
Bubblewart, is that what it was? Well, anyway, there was invasive species.
Bladder wart.
Bladder wart, yes. Um, so uncovering whether there are, um, this particular type of mussels in the ponds will allow them, the conservation to move forward with the proper treatment of invasive species, um, and activities as well, so... Um, this gives a budget of three thousand two hundred dollars, and it's coming before the board, because this falls under the Board of Selectmen line, and this is a first step, so they wanted to at least, um, get the board's blessings, um, to go ahead and start this step.
Great, and you said this is coming from Conservation, and they would recommend it?
Yes, yes, this came right from Conservation.
Um, yeah, I'm wondering, um, what budget did we allocate for this?
Uh, well, we originally allocated twenty-five thousand, but October Special Town Me- uh, Meeting increased it to thirty-five thousand.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, any other questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve?
Uh, motion?
Second.
Second, uh, all in favor? Uh, uh, four oh. Great, thank you. Um, discuss possible projects for ARPA funds, Ms. Green?
Yes, all right, uh, members of the board, so in your packet, um, so the ARPA funds are, they're being, again, a- administered by the Plymouth County Commissioners, um, and they have created a portal that we can go on to look at the different categories for ARPA projects. Um, as a municipality, the two projects that basically work for municipalities are the economic development, uh, negative economic impact, um, projects, and water and infrastructure project, water sewer and infrastructure. Um, the other portals, um, it, it, public health is also included with that, but I thought these two projects here are ones that we might want to focus on. Um, some of the other portals involve essential workers, um, pay, revenue loss, which is very, very difficult for Hanson to fall under, under new guidelines that the Plymouth County Commissioners and ARPA came out with. We thought maybe Camp Kawani as a travel and tourism, um, type of venue might qualify, but, um, after speaking with Tom O'Brien, he said, no, it would not qualify for loss revenue for not being able to hold any of their events over the last couple of years. So focus is, um, on these two, I've printed out the, both of, um, these particular portals, so you can look at the projects that, um, are allowable under COVID. Um, and the nega- negative economic impacts, um, includes a number of different projects, which include, um, sidewalks, improvements to vacant and abandoned properties. So I'm very interested if the Maquon might fall under this. Um, however, the amount of money that's allocated for the town of Hanson is one million, one hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars. Um, we have three years to use that money, we don't have to use it all at once. So questions would be, do we want to use a large chunk of that, um, to fund, to look at demolition of the Maquon? Do we want to use a large amount for, um, water and sewer infrastructure? Or do we want to focus on smaller projects, like sidewalks for Main Street, that wouldn't take up the entire amount? Um, again, we have three, this is a three-year program, so we don't have to rush into it. However, I do see other towns that have, are putting in the applications for some projects. So, um, with looking at the different projects for both of these, it's just good for the board to give some direction on where they feel, feel this money is going to be best ser- best serviced the town.
Any, any initial comments?
Definitely, um, I, I would love it if it could help pay for the Maquon tier down, that would be amazing. Um, but the other thing that the Economic Development Committee has been speaking about, um, quite often is the connectivity of Main Street to Plymouth County Hospital. Um, and, and looking at a sidewalk, um, slash bike path, maybe both, I don't know, um, to be able to do that. And then also that connectivity, as we've discussed many times, um, to burrage, um, from the train station. Um, so tho- those are the things that are definitely in, on the radar screen for the Economic Development Committee, but of course, we always say, how the heck are we going to pay for it? Um, this seems like it would be a really wonderful opportunity, um, not just for economic development, but just for passive recreation, for people to be able to walk, um, you know, up to High Street, uh, up to Plymouth County Hospital. I mean, these, the Plymouth County Hospital Reuse Committee has been working for years on creating a wonderful space up there, and I think we really owe it to them and everybody to try to make it as accessible as possible. That would be my, you know?
Mm-hmm. Okay. Uh, and any other comments from the board?
Only that if you, you know, you took some of the money and divvied it up, um, you know, where it would help defray the cost of two or three projects, um, you know, that might be the way to go too.
Sure.
You know, like, you know, throw a little, up at Plymouth County, uh, get the sidewalk up there, some for Maquon, um, and, and do it that way.
Sure, um, Mr. Weeks, any initial thoughts?
Same as them, I, I think, uh, I'm, I'm big on, on sidewalks, so I think anything that we can do to make more, throughout the town, make it more accessible, I'm all for it, so...
Yeah, and I, and I, what I, um, couple of thoughts is, uh, maybe, this might be a great question for Todd, uh, to ask him, um, if there are any competing funds right at the moment, you know, if there's a, a pool of money and there's two competing causes, if there's a way to alleviate that a little bit, you know, as you said, to kind of divvy it up a little bit. Um, I think that might be, uh, wise, or, um, one thing too, I know that Mike McQ had looked into this a long time ago, which was sewer system tying into Brockton, just to help economic development on Main Street, just because that's Aquifer Two, and it's really difficult to do something like that. So I don't know, you know, where we think that this...
Well, when that landed, um, if, if I might, Mr. Chair, um, was, um, Brockton basically said, no, you can't tie in, even though we've let Whitman tie in, you cannot tie in.
Okay.
We will take your water, but we will not take anything else. Um, I'm just, insert heavy sarcasm there. Um, and then, um, even if they were to have allowed it, it would have been extremely costly. But it might be something we could have Tony kind of look around, because we did just have him present the MBTA, and there is a thought of four D R, which by the way, the, the sidewalks would be very compatible with both of those too. That would help really, um, make a case that we're trying to make it more accessible. But maybe Tony, Lisa, would have some insight into whether, um, you know, we could create not a sewer, but a, a, um, you know, a s- a separate se- like an above ground...
Main water.
Yeah, yeah. And then the other thought, thought that kind of popped into my head is, we all know that many of the water mains in town need to be replaced. Now, I don't want to give that money up for sidewalks and, you know, and bike paths necessarily to water, but to your point, maybe little chunks, maybe they could, you know, I don't know, two hundred thousand for water, and, you know, that type of thing. It just could alleviate a little bit of pain for everybody.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could certainly, I mean, under the water and sewer infrastructure, I mean, centralized wastewater treatment, um, wastewater collection and conveyance, decentralized wastewater. Um, so this, you know, this other sewer infrastructure, so it does include that, but then it also includes culvert repair, um, resizing and removal. I know we've got some culverts in town that are concerned. Um, it'll, replacement of, of storm sewers, other stormwater infrastructure. I know, you know, stormwater, again, is a big area, but remember, we, we only have the one point one, um, million, so...
It's going to go fast.
I don't know if, um, uh, you know, I'll check with Tom O'Brien and look at the applications. I don't know if they will allow us to do two hundred thousand here, two hundred...
I don't know if they will allow us to do 200,000 here, 200,000 here. They might require, how much is the project? The project is 650,000. Okay, that's what you're going to, you know, you can't apply for 300 towards that. You've got to apply. So I will, I will check out all those formalities with it to see if we can do that. But having a direction is good, because then we can, we can kind of concentrate and really start preparing for applying for these ARPA funds.
All right, excellent. And could we, one quick second before you go, Mr. Ke. If we can just add this as a recurring item to the agenda for next time.
ARPA, sure.
Just, just as an update and just kind of keep the conversation going. Mr. Ke.
Not to, you know, prolong this conversation, but it is only 1.1 million dollars and that's going to get eaten up pretty quickly. But, and Matt, I can't remember if you were on the board or not when you brought up McQ, but I thought it was somewhere in the vicinity of 10 million dollars.
Yes.
And that was four to five years ago.
That was before material costs have gone.
Yeah, so it's going to be closer to easily 12, maybe even 15 million now, so.
Sure. It might cost a million dollars to run the sidewalk. I mean, honestly, it's probably all going to go to that. I mean, it's going to go fast.
Yeah, so I just, I just was thinking, if, these are the projects that we always go, I wish we had the money to do it. I really think that this is a good one-time fund to tap into. All right, moving on, request by Deborah Dominic from the Holy Apostles Parish to hold prayer services in front of Town Hall on Saturday, March 19th, 2022. In the past, we have had religious services here on Town Green, so I'm looking for a motion.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? Four oh. Budget update and discussion, Ms. Green?
All right, yes, members of the board and Mr. Chair. So we've been actively working on the budget. As we all know, we sat with the school committee to have a discussion, or we thought with the school committee. But discussion of the budget really, we mainly focused on the partnership and how we can do things a little bit better to open communication with the school committee. We did get an email with an update of the school assessment after they discovered some errors in the calculations. So it did bring our assessment down about $156,000. So with that, our deficit has shrunk from 966 to 829. So we are working diligently going through the budget. But we just want to get some direction from the board when Todd and I look at cutting. Where you want us to look at? Do you want us to look at capital? Do you want us to look at personnel? Obviously, expenses we are looking at, but we just really need to get a direction. Subsidies for Camp Kawani and the transfer station. The transfer station, from what Todd explains, is in the realm of $300,000 for a subsidy. Maybe the board can really recommend that the Board of Health look at increasing the fees for the stickers for the transfer station to help with some of that subsidy. Trash tipping station, tipping fees at the landfills are increasing by the day, basically, because of the shrinking length landfill out there, and even Seamass, the tipping fees are astronomical. So the town really fiscally, I don't know how much longer we can continue with $30 for a dump stick or for people just bring all the trash that they want. It's really not feasible. They're really, people are getting a bang for their buck for trash disposal. So that's one area we're looking at. Camp Kawani is another area where we do have a subsidy for about $135,000. However, they are doing very well as far as their events and their revenue that's intake. So we're, we're looking at decreasing that subsidy, but substantially maybe 50,000 to bring the budget down. So we're looking at many different areas to balance our budget. And we're hoping that the schools, again, will reconsider what their assessment is to the town. Basically, our revenue intake is 3.49%. Unfortunately, COVID, supply issues, personnel issues have caused delays in building and our new growth, basically. So 2021 is a very dry year for new growth. Again, 3.49, yet the schools are giving us 5.76 for an assessment, which they're rounding down to 3.7, which is still more than our 3.49. Last year, we forego, we went any capital, no capital last year. We cut that out of the budget. This year, we have highway trucks that are 20 years old that are falling apart. We have our police that need new cruisers. You know, we just, we forewent capital. And the schools came in with around $400,000 for their capital that they submitted to us. So it's a difficult year, but some direction from the board will help Todd and I really focus on areas that we can cut to bring the budget down, so that we can have a balanced budget.
All right, I'll first ask comments from the board and then I'll come out to you, Ms. Diaz. So initial thoughts, I guess, would be, I think that one, one thing that I had asked the Recreation Commission last time and for the last four years, I mean, and I'm not going to point fingers at this current commission just because they're essentially all new, but is a business plan, a cash flow projection. I know that Mr. Weeks and I had this discussion about, you know, the transfer station and a cash flow projection. And just the state of the transfer station, I think, would be great. And I'm just looking at you, because you're the only, you're the only one in the room from the Board of Health. And I think it'd be great to kind of get a same kind of presentation from the Board of Health of where, where you guys are with the transfer station. What are you guys thinking to raise new revenue or cut costs there? Because I don't want to speak uneducated and say, well, this is, this is the big part of it, you know.
So one of the things we've already done is we've raised as of July 1st, the rate. So it's actually going to be $100 for two years, so that in two years, we can look at it again. And today, we were supposed to discuss raising the fees for everything that people drop off or want to get rid of. But we didn't get our emails in time, so we're going to be doing that next month.
Okay.
So I've got a list of all the surrounding towns and what they charge. So we are looking at that.
So with that being said, and I don't know if you're prepared to say this, because I'll be more than happy to say, come back another time.
Oh, definitely will come back.
With raising the stickers to $100, how does that affect the cash flow up at the transfer station? Would you need such a subsidy for, for, three?
We're still going to need subsidy? I can't tell you exactly how much.
Okay.
I can tell you with the fees that we had for the last sticker was $30. With that being $10 we split through each year, that was $20,000 a year. So this, it will go up. I haven't done the numbers, but I can tell you that it will go up over the next two years, because we're charging 50. And again, we're going to come up on the ARPA fees that we charge for people disposing stuff.
All right.
So there is an effort.
There is definitely an effort. So I'll have, I'll have us invite the Board of Health to come in and kind of present, so we can get more into detail, maybe next meeting.
Figure out how else we can come.
Right, just so we can just kind of discuss this holistically and not only with a little bit of information.
Just so that I could be clear, so it's $100 for a two-year sticker, so $50 a year, basically, then? Okay, perfect. Where now it's $30 per year.
Now it's $30 for three years.
Oh, 30 for three years? Oh, okay.
The revenue for that over $60,000, so.
Sure.
All right, excellent.
It's split over three years in terms of the budget.
So, all right, so great. So if we could have you guys come, would you be able to come back next week, give a presentation? Or do you need a little bit more time?
I will be out of country.
You'll be out of the country?
I will be going back.
All right. How about other members on the board? Do you think that they'd be willing to come?
I can ask.
All right, if you could, if you could check in with them and then get back to Ms. Green, and just so we can get this going, because budget season is upon us. So, so, Mr. Ke.
Yeah, I mean, if you want me to throw my two cents in on this, I do not want to lose personnel. When we get to town meeting, people don't know that now, or know it now, they will then, that we're looking to add, you know, more employees. So I certainly don't want to look at personnel and try to get rid of people, no matter where they are. I would like to talk to Arlene about her plan or the Board of Health's plan. And if you're going out of the country, maybe we could set something up before you leave. Because as everyone knows, the cost of living has gone up this year, more than it has in decades. And, you know, everybody's job, you know, I can only use time, please, but if it went up 2% or 2.25 or 2.5, whatever it went up. The Board of Health is going up over 400% from their $30 for three years to $100 for two years. And if I did the math correctly in my head, that's over 400%. And people are only getting, we'll say, 2% increase in, you know, their salaries. So to me, that doesn't work. And I'm not picking on the Board of Health, because I'll say the same thing about Recreation. We have to stop supporting these programs that are not working. If $30 for three years brought in $20,000, then $100 for two years is going to bring somewhere in the vicinity of, we'll say, $80,000. But we're going to subsidize $165,000. And I don't want to speak out of school, Matt, because that's what you just said, without having an intelligent thought. But if you close the transfer station for one more additional day, do we save $80,000 a year? I don't know, but I'm just saying. So instead of $165,000 to supplement the Board of Health, I mean, the transfer station, it's only $85,000. And these are things we need to look at and figure out. But throwing good money at bad is not a good idea for the town. It's not a good idea for anything. You know, so we need to figure out what is going on. And if the Recreation Department is finally getting their money, then like Lisa said, let's lower that. Let's see what they bring in. The past is the past. When I left there, doesn't matter what was in there. But if they can start with making the money to support themselves, it doesn't need to be a big nest egg in there for them. Let them build it up. We don't have the 300,000. It's that simple. So.
Comments on this side?
I am hopeful. I will say, I was very disappointed that we let, that both towns let the district know what we could afford. And then the assessment was quite a bit more than what we were clear that we could afford. And I know that this is the dance we do every year, and I'm hopeful that they'll come down a bit on the assessment. Because I agree, actually, with everything Jim just said. I am not going to be laying people off. We did that last year, and it was very demoralizing to our Town Hall staff. We are already bare bones as it is. And I am not doing that again. I'm not going to have fire and police feeling like they're on the firing line again. It's, I'm not doing that. I'm not signing up for it. So whatever we do, it needs to be something besides that. I agree with the transfer station. We have circled the drain on this for years, years. Jim, how many years have we talked about, gee, maybe they need to cut back on the number of hours? But it's a separately elected board. We can't make them do that. We can cut the budget.
May 22nd, 2017, first meeting.
We can, we can cut the budget, but we can't, you know, we can't impose. And in terms of Recreation, yes, I recognize that fiscally, it may not make a lot of sense. But we have to decide what we want to be when we grow up, okay? We have to decide if we are going to have Camp Kawani available for recreation, and we think that recreation is an important part of a community, then we need to be willing to say, we're going to be willing to pay something. The notion that they have to be self-sufficient, I think is antiquated. There was a time when that might have been able to happen. I'm not sure that without professional management of the camp, that that could happen with a bunch of well-intentioned volunteers. I'm just, that's just my two cents worth. So I think there's probably always going to be a need for some subsidy. I agree, we could definitely reduce a little bit and see how they do. I do agree with Matt. We have asked for a business plan, and Audrey did present somewhat of a business plan. I don't think you were actually there at that meeting, though. It was the one meeting, I think, you might have missed. And she did project out, but it might be nice for them to come back one more time with feelings, since we are talking about their budget and the transfer station budget, and figure out what can, as a partner, what can you guys do to help ease the pain? We want to ease your pain. We don't want to cut you to the bone. But we've got to hear that you're taking some serious action to, to, you know, decrease that gap. And then from there, I mean, honestly, we may have to just look at stalling capital, you know, some of the capital requests. I just don't see any other way. Honestly, if it's a, if it's a case of a new piece of highway equipment or letting somebody go, every single time, I'm going to be in favor of keeping fire, police, or another employee over a piece of equipment. So that's where I am.
Mr. Weeks, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, I could talk about this all day. I'll spare everybody from having to hear it. I think the answer is we're not cutting anybody. We're not going to cut people. We need more people. We don't need less people. And we could cut all of the services from the transfer station. We can cut all the supplemental funds from, from the Recreation Commission. And we'd still need to find $500,000, $400,000. So even whatever we do now, it's a Band-Aid. We're going to need another million dollars next year. We're going to need another million dollars after that. We have to fix the process. Everyone at this point is going to have to really dig deep. It doesn't matter whether or not they're under our jurisdiction, whether it's the Board of Health or anybody else. We all have to come together, because it's genuinely a crisis at this point. And I think there's a lot of people that are going to be really upset with whatever decision needs to be made. And a lot of people that are, they really need to kind of help with this. We've hit a wall, whether it be the reassessment, the reconfiguration of the school, or the workforce crisis, or the lack of growth or development. There's a whole myriad of issues that could possibly, we could throw blame at. The problem is, is that none of that does us any good. We have to solve the problem now. We have to solve the process issue now. So I think we just have to spend a lot of time having a lot of meetings with a lot of groups that we haven't traditionally done in the past, to make sure that we're all, we're all on the same page. I do think that last Tuesday was a great start. It didn't work out the way it kind of wanted it to, but I think it's a great first step to bringing people together to solve this problem. Because if we don't, we're all, we're all going to suffer. And that million-dollar budget is going to turn into a heck of a lot of layoffs, because we're not going to have another answer. So the answer for me right now is people first. They need to put food on the table. They need to be able to know that they're going to have a paycheck. But at the same time, we're not in the best capital situation right now either. So we have to find a way to resolve this. And I'm very much against using one-time, like, free cash to pay for budgets. I see that here, and I know it's a desperation move to be able to do this. But we can't, we can't use free cash to, to pay for an operating budget. It can't happen. It might be something that we do have to do this year, but that's another deficit. This is why I'm saying, it might be a million dollars now. It's going to be a million plus next year. I mean, take that money, where is it? Where did I see it? $231,000? So add that to whatever we have to figure out for next year. So we have to find, we have to find that money in next year's budget, just to break even. And what I'm afraid of is what we do every year, every single year. It's going to be general operating budget versus school budget. And it's going to be people putting, pitting people against people, and it's not right. We've done the contract negotiations, I've said it a thousand times. You know, all of the people coming together to vote in favor of the school assessment at the expense of them might having to lose jobs or getting jobs cut out of highway, police and fire, they were there in solidarity. We can't let them down. We can't let the school down. And I know I'm coming off preachy, but we have, we have to, we have to, we have to find a way around this. We have to really address the elephant in the room, which is, these budgets are just, the process is completely screwed up, and we have to solve this problem. We really do. Even asking, you know, the transfer stations, it's been, it's been on the floor to be defunded the last two, two years, the town meeting. And it's been, it's been voted down by the people, but, I mean, we have to figure it out. The Finance Committee's been saying it for the longest time. I'm not saying we have to necessarily close it, but when was the last time we really had a sit-down and said, okay, let's talk about this presentation-wise? And I know it's, and Arlene, I get, I look at you, but, just again, because you're the only one here. We really need, we really need something. We need something tangible to look at and say, how do we make an informed decision? We really need, we really need something. We need something tangible to look at and say, how do we make an informed decision? And it's not a matter of the selectmen trying to impose anything on anybody. We literally have to talk because if we don't, and if we are close-minded to the idea of having open conversations, the town will go bankrupt and nobody wants that. And we are going down that path. So we just have to have more conversations. That's really what it is. But to answer, the long-winded way of answering this question, we're not cutting people. We have to figure something else out.
I just want to add, I, I, I feel sometimes like I am in the movie Groundhog Day, honestly. Um, every single year we have this same discussion. Um, and what I don't see us having is a strategic plan. And Mr. Kane got up, it, it was, it was a fairly painful meeting and I, but I do share Joe's sentiment that there was some hope, hopefulness that I got out of it, that we were at least opening up a dialogue. Doesn't always mean it's going to go swimmingly well. Um, but, um, one of the things Mr. Kane, uh, got up, um, and said was, the school, um, committee has got their strategic plan, Whitman's got their strategic plan, and he didn't know whether Hanson did, but of course I knew he didn't. Um, and we should be all comparing these plans so that if we know two years from now, um, the school is planning, I don't know, some, some big build or something, you know, the major that they're going to do that both towns need to share, we're able to do an overlay of what our projected plans are and financial income is going to be versus what their needs are. And that the three of us as partners can talk about this, to Joe's point, so that we're not getting pitted every year, school versus fire and police. This is just not a sustainable model. Honestly, it's exhausting. We never get anywhere. We never move the needle on any of it. Um, and the only way to do that is to sit down and be thoughtful out of the moment. We're in crisis right now, semi-crisis. I don't want to overstate, but, um, as we are every year at this time, deja vu. Um, but, um, we don't need to be here every year. We can try to plan. We can look at what are the future revenue streams. Now, next year may be a little bit better. If building costs come down, we're going to see some of these projects that have been delayed, they may end up starting to build. We know that Empress LLC had a, an opening, um, you know, last week. Um, so we know that at some point we will start seeing revenue from that. Um, you know, so there are some hopeful things that we could pull into our planning, but we need a strategic plan. We, we really do. You can't run a company this way. You can't even run your private life this way. And yet we're running town government this way. So we need a plan. Um, so I really hope that that's something that as a board, obviously right now in the fray of, you know, in the middle of planning for town meeting and we've got several of our members, regardless of who are not going to be with us, um, but probably after the, um, you know, town election, we should, we should get at that, really. It should be like top of the list. And to your point, Joe, then we're pulling in all the different stakeholders and we're talking to people. You know, not in the moment, not in the crisis, not on the fly. We're really being thoughtful about how we, how we approach this.
And if I may, um, I actually, um, started the project in Whitman, um, Ann Donner just completed the strategic plan in Whitman. I think they had a budget of about fifteen thousand dollars, um, and they all praised the work that she did. I'm happy to reach out to her and have her submit a proposal for us so that we can, um, know what, we, we can get for that money. Like I said, I think Whitman's budget was about fifteen thousand and they just, um, passed the strategic plan. I had a lot of conversations with her, um, so I know what documents that she's going to look for and things like that. Um, so I'm, I'm happy to do that so that we can start that process and at least get a proposal.
I think that's great. And just so you guys know, I did submit to Lisa a warrant article to fund a strategic plan, um, consultant, which I know we'll talk about our articles at some other point, but.
Perfect, so.
Hopefully, we're going to, we're, we're resubmitting the, uh, meals tax in this annual town meeting warrant. So hopefully, um, it will pass and we will see some revenue from that because it's really not a burden on any of the businesses, um, to add this point seven, point zero seven five, uh, meals tax. Um, a- all the other, all the other communities around us are really benefiting from this revenue and Hanson really could use the revenue and it's not a burden basically on, on anybody to add seventy-five cents onto a hundred dollar bill.
Um, so, Ms. Green, uh, do you have a good sense of where the board would like to go, uh, budget-wise?
I do, yes. Yes, I do.
Excellent. All right.
Mr. Chair, if I may not belabor that point, but, you know, we all sat here and talked about, uh, no one losing jobs and everything. Um, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page with the people of Hanson, that we're not looking to raise taxes either.
No.
Um, you know, that kind of, you know, it wasn't said, although I know we all feel that way. I just want to make sure any of the naysayers out there that we, while we had this discussion are writing on Facebook right now to say, you know, how we're against the citizens.
No, I, I agree with that. I just think that, uh, to your point, I, I, what I was going to say was a little bit more dramatic. But, you know, I have grandparents in town and I don't, I don't, I don't want them eating cat food for the spa- for the sake of us mismanaging this budget.
My point exactly.
And I am going to say us mismanaging this budget because we all have ownership in this. We all saw this coming. We all could have started a long time ago. And, you know, it's a lot, like to, to Laura's point, all this is every year is the same thing, deficit, skies falling. We close the gap. We always find a way. We're going to find a way now. It will work out. But, uh, you know, just as much as we care about the future of the kids in the town, we have to fu- we have to care about the future of everybody in this town. And it's really important that, so I appreciate you saying that because, yeah, it's important.
No, to be clear, we're not planning on an override this year.
Correct.
Just to be clear.
That's actually a much more succinct one.
I can just see all those things being deleted now on Facebook.
So anyhow, moving on. Um, so, um, next item on the agenda is to vote to waive the right of first refusal to purchase nine oh one, uh, sorry, nine oh two, Main Street, Unit forty-seven, Hanson, Mass. Um, so this is, uh, Ms. Green, do you want to just give us a quick synopsis?
Yeah, so, um, this is a, an affordable housing, um, unit. And anytime a, an affordable housing unit is put up for sale, uh, the Board of Selectmen have a right of first refusal, um, to purchase the property. And I don't believe that the Board of Selectmen are interested in becoming condo owners. So it's, 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 um, normal for the board to vote to waive the first right of refusal. Um, and the last time they did that, the property was, uh, nine oh two Main Street, Unit fifty-two. So that was in August of twenty twenty. Um, there is a motion that's included with that, um, for you, Mr. Chair, to read.
So I just have one question, Mr. Chair. Um, so I'm wondering, um, have we just double-checked with Hanson Housing? Um, that they do not have an appetite for this? Because community preservation money could pay for affordable housing and to date, um, the only money that, um, the Housing Authority has used from that bucket of community preservation money was for the Housing Production Plan, which I'm not diminishing because it was incredibly important and has, will be useful going forward in a number of ways. Um, but I just want to ask whether we've checked with Hanson Housing.
Well, they're the ones that submitted the letter to us.
Okay, I don't, I couldn't find that property, so. All right, well, then I will, uh, make a motion, make a motion. Um, I'd like to make a motion to waive the town's right of first refusal to purchase nine, this says nine oh two.
That's what it says.
Yeah, nine oh two, Main Street, Unit forty-seven.
Number forty-seven, Hanson, Mass, zero two three four one.
Uh, second?
Oh, second.
Okay, um, all in favor? Four oh. Ms. Dees?
Yes.
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 Good question. All right, uh, moving on to old business, uh, execute highway integrate, uh, integrated, uh, collective bargaining agreement. Ms. Green?
So these are, um, as you remember, we successfully negotiated all the union contracts, um, prior to the October special town meeting. Um, and what we have before us are finally the integrated contracts, um, with all of the term, the terms that were negotiated with the, um, current, uh, pay sheets. Um, so these, this is what this is, is it's the cur- the integrated contract with all of the new terms that we came about. Um, so I have a copy of that with two signature sheets. Uh, this is highway. We also have clerical, um, which is also integrated and complete. Um, so we have both of those available for the board to sign, ratify and sign. Um, and then we also have the chief of police. We have his integrated contract, um, and then, um, the fire chief. So we have all four of these. We are waiting on fi- the fire integrated contract and police. They are currently with the attorneys for the unions. So that's where those contracts are. We are waiting on that. Um, so as soon as they come our way, um, and are completely integrated, we'll get those before the board to sign and ratify. And we will actually have signed ratified contracts, um, for the first time in a long time.
Perfect, great. You don't need a motion or anything like that. These are just signatures.
No, but I do have a sticker right where you can go to sign and there's two signature sheets with each so that we have two copies. The only one that's missing a signature sheet is Chief Mix? Um, actually, I'm sorry, no, we created a signature sheet, so we'll go with that one. Um, so I'm going to, so it's all down. Um, you know, I'll start at the other end.
I might suggest, Ms. Green, that, um, that prospectively, we might want to, um, highlight just the basic changes that we've made, just again, for the sake of transparency. I don't really feel that citizens should have to request the contracts to get some of the highlights of what we might have changed. Um, so just a thought there.
Do you, do you want me to just go over the highlights?
If you're able to do that now, I do think it would be helpful.
Some of the highlights with our highway, obviously, um, the colas were at two percent. Um, we also increased some of their stipends for the licenses that they hold, um, apart from the CDL. So, um, the employees at the highway, they hold hoisting licenses. Um, so they get a five hundred and seventy-five dollar stipend for a hoisting license and then I think it's like a hoisting A and a hoisting B license that they get stipends for. Um, they also, uh, changed their hours to be from seven to three year-round. Whereas in the winter, they were, I think, seven thirty to three thirty. In the summer, they were seven to three, but now they're going to be seven to three all year. Um, we looked at, um, changing, altering the sick time for newly hired employees so that the newly hired employee would earn a specific amount of sick time, um, rather than having the unlimited sick time as we were kind of trying to move away from that. So that's some of the highlights for our highway. Um, clerical, some similar. Um, we had the colas for the clerical. Um, we also highlighted, um, again, we, we talked about the sick time where newly hired employees, they can earn a certain amount of sick time, whereas grandfather or employees hired prior to a date still have the unlimited sick time. Um, we added Juneteenth to all of the contracts as a holiday, um, so that's an additional holiday. And, um, eyeglasses for our clerical because, you know, they look at computers and read all day long. So those are some of the highlights for those. Uh, police, the fire chief and, um, our police chief, we, uh, updated their salaries. Uh, for our fire chief, we provided for, um, outside employment, outside of his regular duties in the contract and also Juneteenth were added to each contract.
Great, great.
Great, thank you.
Um, all right, as we're signing these, can we multitask? Um, I'm looking for a motion to approve the one-day liquor licenses, uh, as printed on the agenda.
So moved.
Seconded, moved and seconded, all in favor? Oral? And I'm also looking for a motion to approve open session minutes. Um, let me just make sure that we're all here. Um, any comments about the minutes?
Nothing that jumps out.
Okay, so it, it looks like everyone was here.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Great, thank you. Uh, moved and seconded, um, all in favor?
We'll do this afterwards. I'm good, yes.
Perfect. All right, um, and then the last thing, um, if you're available. Uh, Ms. Green, uh, is the Town Administrator Report.
Yes, uh, so, um, I've been taking some new approaches in our Town Administrator Report. And I think it's, it's good to let people know what our office does on a daily basis. Um, so what we, Lucy and I have done, started doing is we are tracking the number of phone calls that we take in. So between the two of us, um, in a week, one week span, we answer about a hundred, uh, eighty-one phone calls. Um, some of those calls are transfers because a lot of people call into our office and they don't really know, know where they need to be, so they explain to us what they're looking for and we send them off to a building or clerk or, so we do that. Um, that was, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, last week, we took in about sixty-four phone calls again and same thing. And we, we help people with a number of different requests. Um, emails, I get a average between sixty-five and eighty emails per day, which it's... There are a number of those emails that are sales and things like that, but there are a lot of them that I, I need to look at. Um, that have to do with legal issues, um, personnel issues. They deal with, um, residents asking questions, the states, the grants. So all of these emails are coming in. All the other departments are sending emails requesting a number of different things for our office to do. So, um, that's what Lucy and I, you know, that, that's administrative. Um, I began work on researching and I've working with Jill, um, who works with our office in the morning on the grant writer slash procurement position. So we're gathering information. I go on the MMA website and look up seat to see what other towns are looking for. So, uh, we have a direction on that and she is actually putting that information together. Um, one thing that we thought of to, um, that we're going to put an article in for the grant writer position is to create the position possibly at this town meeting and then, but not fill it or fund it until maybe October. We'll, we'll see where we go. Um, we've also been working on a maternity slash paternity policy. So there's been a lot of changes to the, to the laws regarding maternity slash paternity. So it looks like a maternity leave policy was started to be created back in twenty eighteen, but then it, it doesn't look like it went anywhere. So I've got that policy and we're building on it, um, based on research. And other towns are going to watch what we do because they also need to update the maternity and paternity because of the new laws. So circling back to Community Compact Grant, which I, um, applied for and received, I think shortly after I started. It's been really difficult getting proposals for the work for that. But finally, I've been successful with getting, uh, I did get one proposal for the Economic Development Manual and I'm waiting on a second proposal. Um, still working on the wage and, um, classification study for that. Um, people are just not responsive or they just can't take on the extra work. So it's a work in progress, but that's an update so that finally that, the Economic Development Manual is starting to come to life. I have been dealing with a number of open meeting law complaints, uh, public records requests. So we've been working with that. Um, something that we've done too is with public records, uh, under the law, we are allowed to charge a nominal fee for public records. So what we've done, I created an invoice that whenever somebody lets me know they've received a public records request, it's a fillable invoice. So under the law, um, you can charge either the hourly rate for the lowest paid employee or just a flat fee. So basically what we've done is we're charging twenty-five dollars as a flat fee, but then five cents each copy for the copies. We, um, we do let the person know, we acknowledge the public records law. Uh, we, and we let them know about that the law does allow us to charge this fee. It's a lot of work when you're compiling and searching for records and then putting them together and making the copies. And depending if they want minutes or emails or other documents, it takes a lot of time to, to gather these documents. So, um, I, I find that this public records, when people hear, yes, we're going to charge, the people, they maybe don't request as much information, but we acknowledge all of it, um, and comply with the law. So we, um, Tony, um, came to me and had a conversation with the Metro South Chamber of Commerce regarding Hanson's efforts towards economic development, our strategies. Um, they, he also talked about the new MBTA, the Community Housing Act that they, um, proposed. And just wanted us to know that the South Shore Metro, uh, Chamber of South Commerce thinks that we're doing a great job with everything that we've been doing. Um, our housing development plan, the Rapid Recovery Plan, um, the work of the Economic Development Committee on Main Street. So I just wanted to, um, shout out for Tony. Um, and Metro South Chamber of Commerce is noticing the town of Hanson for all the work we've been doing. We also compared, also completed the IT Community Compact Grant, um, which we was, uh... also compared, also completed the IT Community Compact Grant, um, which we was, uh, applied for and, uh, awarded to our former town planner, Deb Petty, but then she left in the process. So, Permanise is the vendor that's working on the permits. They have completed the fire module, so they'll be, they'll be working on that. And then they're going to start with the rest, which is going to include building, health, planning, zoning, um, and the Board of Selectmen. So, it's, it's, it's a project that is, is finally, we're gaining some speed on that. Um, zoning Board of Appeals investigation. Um, all of the, uh, requests have been complied with and forwarded over to the attorney who's conducting the investigation. We are just waiting for the results at this point. So, um, that's where we are with that. Um, update on TMS, who conducted the deregionalization study. So, um, I did have some conversations with them and spoke with Judy Hall and Andrew Paquette, who is the CEO. They are moving forward with doing a more in-depth financial analysis, um, of the deregionalization. They're going to provide some options with, with actual dollar figures attached. They're going to look at the FY twenty-three budget because that's really the first full-year budget of the new assessment for the towns. So, they're going to look at that budget, even though, um, there's still probably some movement on it, but they're going to, they're going to base that on there. So, and there's no extra charge for that work.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Green.
So, we, that's an update on that. Um, I assisted the Conservation Commission with submitting a progress report for the Mass Trails Grant, which they're working on to make improvements to part of the Bay Circuit Trail, which runs through Hanson. Um, submitted the Green Communities final grant report, um, documentation to OCPC, who will be generating the actual report and submitting it to Green Communities. Um, so we've done, uh, you know, done that. Grants? There's a lot of work that goes into grants. Um, people out there just think, hey, just apply for a grant. There's a lot of planning that goes into grant applications, um, and they're not a page or two. They're usually ten to fifteen pages with a lot of information. Then there's progress reports that you need to submit with, that's a requirement of every grant. Where are you at this point? How much money have us have you spent? Let, show, you know, show me the invoices or whatever. So, that's a requirement for every single grant out there. Um, and when you're complete the work, a final report is due. Um, so again, there's a lot of work that goes into these grants that involves writing and gathering pictures and, um, opinions from the people, you know, who are a part of having the work done. Um, town meeting warrant is in progress. Articles, um, you know, the warrant actually has been drafted, so we're just going to sit down and, and tweak and, um, just bold some, some warrant items as far as capital that we may be removing. So, at the next meeting, we will be presenting the warrants to the Board for review. Um, and then you can pull out what you want and things like that. Um, and last but not least, just our office, we assist residents with a number of different requests. Like I said, when we, you know, the phone calls, people don't know where to go. We assist them with that. We assist business owners with licensing questions because that's what our office does. Um, we've been dealing with dog complaints, uh, road complaints, legal questions. Um, you know, we, we direct callers with, even if we can't help them, we direct them to people who can, maybe outside the town. Um, so we're really very busy in our office. Uh, we never have a dull moment, I say. Um, and I think we're doing some really good work in the office as far as, um, the whole operation. There we are. Any questions?
I just want to say that was a great town administrator's report, and I hope to see more like them. Uh, any questions?
Amen. I agree.
We're busy bees, so, um, it, it feels good to get all of this and help all the other departments achieve their goals and, and, um, help them in any way that we can support them.
Perfect. Um, so with that being said, uh, before I look for a motion to adjourn into executive session, um, I just want to give a, um, honorable mention to our newly-appointed Conservation Commissioner, Edward Carter Heel, for sticking with us throughout the whole meeting. So, um, thank you very much for participating and being involved.
Very interesting. Thank you.
So, um, Chief?
You need to vote on my contract in public. We did it in executive session. You didn't take a public vote.
Great. Thank you. Um, so with that being said, I'm looking for a motion to, um, enter into a, um, contract with Police Chief Mix for three years.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Four oh. Chief, thank you. Um, with that being said, I am looking for a motion, uh, to adjourn into executive session in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Two A, Excerpt Two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negoti, negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Uh, Excerpt Three, to discuss, uh, strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body. And the chair so declares to wit, uh, Town Administrator, Police Union, um, FL SA agreement, uh, Excerpt Two, Town Administrator Contract, and Excerpt Three, to discuss and vote, uh, Hanson Police Free, uh, Hanson Police Relief Association slash Mass Cop Local Four Oh Eight, uh, FL SA overtime payment agreement.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Uh, roll call vote. Uh, Mr. Weeks?
Aye.
Ms. Kama?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Mr. Hickey?
Aye.
We are now in executive session. Uh, thank you very much for tuning in.